We're calling the special meeting to order. Would you please stand for the pledge allegiance and salute to the New Mexico State Department?
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with the hands of a nation and a government indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And so do the flags of the state of Mexico. This is a symbol of our recognition of the United Cultural State. I want to say my congratulations.
Moving on to the next item of the agenda is approval of the special meeting agenda. Have we all had a chance to look at it?
Mr. Chairman, we can hear you.
Mr. Chair! I move to approve the special meeting agenda.
A second. Second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion, all over in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item will be recognition of services for Abigail Burgess. You can come up here. This is a certificate in appreciation for your service and commitment to the citizens of Grant County, county attorney 2008 to 2019. Do we have anything to say before?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, can you? Just like to say thank you so very much for your service to the county. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for your 11 years service.
Yes.
I agree. Thank you for the short time that I've been with you. Thanks so very much for it.
I miss being able to pop in your office and wine night you.
Thanks for being a therapist.
Thanks.
Legal therapist.
She's a legal therapist. My side of the agenda is going to be public input during this portion of the meeting. We welcome your suggestion and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speaker will bring them in in 5 minutes. Any individual who wants to discuss dynamo or death may be forced to be placed on a future agenda. Request one of our local accounting managers' offices. Do we have anyone for a public input? Okay, seeing that, we can move on to resolution. Next item, Resolution A, approve, disapprove Resolution R-19-51, fiscal year 2019 final budget adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have approved R-19-51 to consider for adoption. This would be final adjustments to last year's fiscal year, and I will go over the adjustments. There's a transfer out in the general fund to a total of $100,600, and there's this $25,600 to go into Farm and Range, and $75,000 into Quere Caminos 19 grant. We didn't receive the funds in the Farm and Range department for last fiscal year until this fiscal year in July. So in order to not have a deficit balance, we have to do temporary cash transfer. So when we receive, we received the funds already, so what I'll do is alternate and do a cash transfer to put it back into the general fund.
Hold on. Sorry.
And in Quere Caminos, that's also a temporary cash transfer, and that's for a cash flow since we haven't received the reimbursements yet for the end of the fiscal year for the months of May and June. So again, it's a temporary cash transfer. Once we receive those funds, I'll transfer it back into the general fund. Also, in the general fund, there's an intra-budget transfer, and I know that was a resolution for me to be able to do these, but since it's from the commissioners' fund into the treasurers and into the general services department, I'm bringing it to you so that you can see what that transfer is. It's in the part-time salaries at the treasurers for $7,225, and postage of $600 into general services. That $7,000 in the salaries is for that part-time position that was allowed for the treasurer to receive. There's also a temporary cash transfer of $63,342 in the Whiskey Creek Fire Department into the capital projects for the addition to the fire station. And again, this is for a cash flow. Once we receive those reimbursements, they will go back into Whiskey Creek Fire Department. Also, in the fire departments, there's an increase to construction and rehab of $2,020 for the Santa Rita Fire Department, an increase of $27,453 in the end-of-debt fund for the safety net care pool, and the Dwy grants, a total of $19,053 in expenses. And then, in the road special projects, $13,902 increase in expenses for road projects. Then, in the restorative justice grant, an additional $1,383 in expenses, an increase in the general obligation bond debt service, an additional $100 in expenses for administrative fees, an additional $118 in administrative fees for the home health, harmless, grocery receipts tax bond, and an additional $3,000 in revenue for the chipper rental for some repairs. I'm sorry, not for repairs. We had to budget revenue in order to make the expense increase from the last meeting for repairs to the chipper. So overall, in your cash transfers, of course, it's going to zero out. It's a $163,142, an increase in revenue of $3,000, and expenses $64,029, and in the intra-budget transfers of $7,825. Any questions? And, sorry, let me mention that all these that are doing the expense, increase in the expenses, they have that many available in the pool cash.
No other questions?
Yes.
The numbers you've given us for end of year, so that we know what our starting balances are for coming year, are based on this being approved?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R-19-51.
Second. Second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? No discussion, all over in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to be approve, disapprove Resolution R-19-52, final quarter financial report ending June 30, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, here's our final report for the fiscal year of 2018-2019, and I will go over those major funds, which is the general, the road, and the correction. So in the general fund, we started off with the $4,244,798 cash balance. We received $14,246,250 in revenues. We had cash transfers out of $4,496,175, and expenditures of $9,276,943,99, leaving us with a balance of $4,717,929,17. In the road fund, we started the fiscal year with a cash balance of $207,476. We had revenue of $16,560,15, and expenditures of $1,713,97, and transfers in of $804,89, 25, leaving us with a cash balance of $361,028,20. In the correction fund, which is jail detention, it's the second fund, second to the last on that page. We began with a cash balance of $386,75, revenues of $885,824,50, we had transfers in of $1,839,711, and expenditures of $2,370,463,87, leaving us with a cash balance of $741,146,63. Do you want me to go over any of these other funds, or do you have any questions?
No questions.
And of course, in the additional pages that you have, it's all salary by funds and the detailed reports.
Yeah, I've got a question. Are these based on actual cash, not accrued expenses and revenues?
It's just actual cash that we received.
So, when I look at the bottom line, we actually have $10 million more among all these different funds than we had at the start of the year?
That is correct, because these numbers do not, they don't take into consideration the three twelfths that would have to sit aside, but you are correct. And $10 million, probably the majority of that is coming from the, from the bonds of the eight million, because it's included in here.
This is what I haven't had time to look for.
It's in Fund...
So it just transfers over to the next year?
Yes. It just carries over onto the next one.
In the Geo Bonds?
Yes, it's in Fund 401. It's on the second page.
Yeah, that's three million.
Sorry, no, sorry, no.
Okay. Yeah, that's seven and a half million of it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just having trouble figuring out where in the world that came from.
Probably got it all wrong.
No, you're not.
I don't have any others, Mr. Chair.
What do I just? No. I want you to move on. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution R-19-52 as presented by Ms. Vasquez.
Second. Second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? No discussion, all over in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the next item, budget hearing. I received discussion regarding the bank account budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
You have in the Novus Agenda the entire budget, which includes all the funds, the third of my grants, debt service, the bonds, all the funds. But you have a printed copy in front of you that's just including the major funds. So I will go over the major funds. I gave you, I sent you an email of the highlights, a narrative of the changes from the final budget to the preliminary, and in it, I mentioned that we have received additional monies in property taxes, the delinquent taxes, the grocery receipts tax in Pilt, and that we also have received a loss in copper. So we ended up with a cash balance of about, not about, but of $4,720,273. We also were 1.2 million below our budget on the expenses. We have 91.5% of expenses from our budgeted expenses in fiscal year 2019. I will go over the highlights as far as the changes in the individual line items from the preliminary budget to the final. In the commissioners, I increased professional services by $130,000. And what I did is I transferred the salaries and benefits for the attorneys from the managers' department into the professional, professional services and commissioners. I increased $2,500 in the train line item of the treasurer's office for staff to be able to attend New Mexico Edge classes. I also increased IT by $60,000, and this is for, to update the chart of accounts in our, in code tire system to coincide with the new chart of accounts of the Department of Finance. I also increased in the planning department, $15,000 for the code red service agreement, but I also budgeted $15,000 in revenue for this. We have an MOU with the Towne Service City, Hurley, Bayard, and Santa Clara to be able to provide, to pay for these services. I also did a $47,500 transfer into the airport fund, and this is for, to have a cash flow program that we will be receiving to continue to do the project, the run-rings project at the airport, which is going to be done in stages. And these funds will be reimbursed next fiscal year, which is fiscal year 2021. I did a cash transfer, $57,371 into the landfill fund to cover a shortfall that, with the projections for this fiscal year, there would be a shortfall of revenues. And so in order to cover these, the shortfall, I had to transfer $57,000. I also did a cash transfer of $64,873 into regional dispatch, and this is to be able to pay for the NMAA loan that they are going to be receiving for the auto CAD system. Of course, these are, I don't have actual numbers here from the New Mexico Finance Authority, so I'm going to, if it's not necessary, this transfer will not go in at the end of the year. And again, the same thing with the landfill. If it's not necessary, they do, if their revenues do exceed expenditures, these transfers will not be necessary, but I won't know until later on in the year. I also put aside $315,000 into what's called an unbudgeted reserve fund, which would be used for a potential salary increase according to the wishes of the board of commissioners to what you decide what you want to do with the salary increases. But I did set aside $315,000. So with all of this being done, it would leave us with a cash balance. I lost that work. Is that a caption? Oh, no, I have it right here. It would leave us with a ending cash balance of $180,850. Well, I guess I should go back and let you know what the total budgeted revenues are for the fiscal year. So with this worksheet, you'll see that there was $4,729,273 in, on audit at the beginning cash balance. The revenues are $13,504,60, budgeted transfers of $3,977,139,53.
Sorry, Linda, where are you?
I'm looking at a recap.
Sorry, excluding law enforcement?
No, it's a final recommended budget worksheet that has the list of all the departments, but the beginning cash balances, budgeted revenues, expenses.
It's not one of the three that are on Novus Agenda?
Yes. Yes, it's got the highlighted spreadsheet.
It's the first link.
It's the first link. Thank you. It doesn't say summary online, that's why I couldn't tell which one you were talking about.
Okay.
Okay, it says recap.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thanks, we're with you.
Okay, so the budgeted revenues are $13,504,60, budgeted transfers of $3,977,139,53, budgeted expenditures of $11,827, leaving us with an estimated ending cash balance of And in there, you'll see that reserve for unbudgeted expenses of $315,000, and then the three-twelfth reserve requirement of $2,752,69, which would leave us a cash balance of $180,850.
Linda, could I interrupt you for a moment? The reserve for unbudgeted expenses, does that show up anywhere on this?
It doesn't. It does not. I didn't do that because I'm not sure exactly which route we're going to be taking.
Right.
So I hadn't included it, included it yet, okay? So in the road fund, well, you know, let's just stick to the general fund. I also attached a worksheet with the commissioners' requests. I would like for you, while we do approve the budget, if you could make also a motion to approve whatever it is that you wish to do with these requests. But with these requests, there is $40,000 requested by Commissioner Edwards for professional development, which would be about $200 per employee for training or to attend classes. The request by Commissioner Brown was a total of $22,000 for libraries, which, there's already $10,000 included in this budget. The breakdown would be $8,000 for the city Bayard, $8,000 for the Tennesse River City, $4,000 for the Hilo Library, and $2,000 for the rural bookmobile. Commissioner Conson is requesting $35,000 for the Baton Park to replace broken tiles at the Veterans Memorial Wall, and Commissioner Williams is requesting $20,000 for the year If these are approved, then, I did not get a request from Commissioner Salaf to put into here, so he may, you know, later on come out with something if he wants to bring it up. But with these requests, it would be additional $107,000 to the budget, and so with the three-twelfth reserve requirement on that, it would be about $133,000. So leaving us with a surplus of about $47,100 if these requests are all approved. So...
You said a reserve with that, but you mean an ending cash balance of that?
Yes. Yes. Okay, so then I'm going to go on to the road fund. In the road fund, the beginning cash balance was $361,020, budgeted revenues of $1021,000, transfers in to the road fund of $700,000, expenditures of $18,59,115, with an estimated ending cash balance of $223,713, and the reserve requirement of $154,926, leaving a surplus of $16,787. In the correction fund, the beginning cash balance is $741,147, budgeted revenue of $865,500, budgeted transfers into the correction fund of $18,000, budgeted expenditures of $3,382,187, leaving an estimated ending cash balance of $24,460. And there is no reserve requirement for the detention center. So this is our budget, and I'm going to go through the major funds, and I just went over changes from the preliminary. Of course, if you look at it, you might see an increase, maybe about $2,000 here and there, but that's going to be based off of actual expenses in fiscal year 2019 that I felt that I needed to increase in the individual line item. I don't know if you want to discuss this individually, how you want me to take care of this as far as that goes.
I didn't really understand the question.
Okay, so I just covered, you know, whatever major changes I made to the preliminary budget. So I don't know if you want me to go over each individual department, because there might have been an increase, maybe of a couple thousand dollars in each department, or a decrease of the business based off of whatever actual occurred in fiscal year 18. So I don't know how you want to handle this, or if you want me to move forward and talk about salaries and whatever other items you'd like to talk about.
I don't have need to go over the other funds. I'm actually still working on matching the general fund to what we had before. You all can, I think, come up with what you're on.
Okay. One of the requests that I also had in addition to working on and bringing all the employees to the midpoint level of the position and classification and compensation study, again, like I said, that would be about $315,000 to complete that.
I'm going to have to give some here and there.
Okay, maybe I just want to... Okay. So one of the tasks that I was asked to do was to figure out how much it was going to cost the county to bring the employees up to the midpoint level of the position classification and compensation study. So that's that $315,000 that I mentioned that I put aside in the budget. But in addition to that, I was also asked to find out what the total cost would be for an increase of $0.25 an hour for all employees. So with total salary and benefits to accomplish the $0.25 increase is $66,138. That's that $0.25. Again, this does not include law enforcement. None of these figures that I'm giving you as far as the salaries include law enforcement.
And you returned $66,000?
$138.
And that would reclassify my request. That's why I didn't have anything on this, on the other additional request, because that's part of what I want to improve.
So I have a question. I don't recall, I don't recall any discussion about bringing all employees to the midpoint. That doesn't actually make any sense to me, because we have employees who have been here for a long time that are at the midpoint, you know, we have employees that may have just started, that doesn't make a lot sense.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, can you talk briefly about that in the preliminary budget, and when you were talking about the overall vision, and I said that was a starting place where we could start by looking at what it would cost the county to bring everyone who was not at the midpoint to the midpoint to bring it a little more equitable, but how you choose to step that into place, or it was just a starting point, so we would know kind of where...
So we don't know where we're at. Okay. So I think there's two pieces of discussion here. There's one about the $0.25 an hour thing, and then there's the other discussion about the $315,000. So I would just like to ask us to keep those two conversations separate, and then as long... And then, as long as we're on that topic, I have one question about the three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that, so as long as, actually I have two questions. So reserve for unbudgeted expenses, would we have the opportunity to come back and decide how that's going to be spent as a commission? Would we have, we get to approve how that's going to be spent? Okay. And then the second thing is, is while we're figuring that out, and I have a lot to say about that at the appropriate point, which may not be now, but while we're figuring that out, will this be invested somewhere, so there's any interest while it's sitting around waiting for us to spend it?
It remains under control of the county, so such time that the commission decides what they want to do.
Okay.
So even if you don't make a decision until six months down the road, or whenever it is, of course, you're only going to lose half of that.
What is three hundred and fifteen thousand and five hundred dollars?
No, it'd be going to be less, three hundred and sixty thousand or something.
I was thinking about if it was, if we invested the three hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah, got it.
Mr. Chair, let me now bring my question in here. So there's three hundred and fifteen thousand for potential, and, well, that is going to be in the future, it might be six or seven months, right, before we, we can make a decision on that?
No, we could do that today, too.
Well, I thought, correction, if I'm wrong, I thought we were waiting for a final study to come in and say, before we were in the job description.
So this is, this is worth discussing. We've had that final study. We are in a revision process.
Yes, a revision.
That I believe will be, that we will all be doing on a very regular basis, I hope, my hope, that we would regularly review our compensation plan to make sure it's, it's in order. So I'm not sure there will ever be a time when we can say, okay, we're set, we don't have to think about this anymore. I think we will always have to keep thinking about it, and we shouldn't wait for any revision to take an action that we want to take, because we will always be waiting.
Okay, but it was my understanding, you know, as we discussed, that we're going to wait on the review for this current one, to make any adjustments or any doubt that might be out of line?
That was not my understanding.
That was clearly, that was my understanding as well.
That's why it was going to take so long.
I think what happened, and this is something that sort of was dawning on me, that there was a comprehensive plan was done, what, approximately two years ago, two and a half years ago?
Two thousand and eight, two thousand and seventeen.
Well, adopted in two thousand, so how much did we spend for that plan? About sixty thousand? We spent about sixty thousand dollars to do that plan, and we're not even up to the midpoint or mid-level of that plan. And then we have another discussion that we're going to redo it again and take another six, six to eight months, that's the way I understood it. So I think that instead of, I mean, this is just my opinion, this is one of the commissioners, that we need to somehow start looking at the whole plan and catching up with that plan, and if, you know, it is a wish of the board to wait another six, eight months to develop another one, or increase it, or do whatever that is fine, but, you know, sitting back, spending all that money, and having somebody come in and do these studies, and we're not, we haven't implemented it, really, I think it, I think we need to discuss this. What can we do, or how can we get our employees on a study that was done, and I'm assuming it was done for two purposes, for, for, to make sure that the job descriptions weren't aligned, but also that we are taking care of the employees and giving our raises as the pressure goes up. So I think that that discussion should take place. I don't know if the discussion about the twenty-five cents should be right now, I think we need to keep them separate, but at least the discussion of, of the three hundred and fifteen is to what we need to do.
Yeah, so my understanding is the same as yours, and my feeling about what we should do sounds like it's probably the same. When we adopted this compensation plan, we knew we didn't have the funds to actually implement it. We knew we were going to have to wait, and I guess, because we've been on, the three of us have been on this commission for about, that was in the back of my head the whole time, and I never told you that that was in the back of my head, that I've been waiting for a chance to implement that plan. And we've done well enough with budgeting and with revenues, that now we can move forward on that. The fact that it was done two years ago, I don't think renders it obsolete at all. It's maybe obsolete in a few smaller areas that the revision will catch, but I don't think it was to wait until that revision happens to try to implement what we've already done, it's still pretty recent. So, I'd like to move ahead.
How would we, and please forgive me for making this, but what are you proposing? Just going ahead and putting that, that reserve that we're talking about and pushing it into salaries right now?
I would support that. I don't know why we did the plan if it wasn't so that we could get our employees on that plan. And we would see on average, much more of a raise than what you're talking about. Now, it wouldn't be across the board, because some people are already above midpoint, and it would be more fair.
Would we then just visit a current review of those jobs? Because I'm also under the impression that there's some jobs that don't really mesh with the descriptions, that maybe are in need of review. How many there are, I don't know, but I know that there are some jobs that don't mesh, mesh with those descriptions, so we would just adjust those as necessary?
That's how I see it, and I think that process is going to be ongoing for years.
Well, I think we need to continue to look at it. You know, the way I'm reading, the way I read it here is, is, I'm going to have expenditure reserve of three hundred and fifteen thousand for potential salary increases and benefits as determined by the board, that's not what I was looking, but it's reserved this week. This is what it would cost to bring our employees to the midpoint level of the position, and I'm thinking that, maybe we're on the same page, but I'm thinking if we do this study, we spend this money, I think we owe it to our employees, and to look at it and bring them up to the midpoint level, I'm going to say there, maybe we can, down the road, look at it a little bit, a little bit, where people were at, or move that down, and so forth and so on.
So I'm having a really hard time grabbing my head around this conversation. So one of the things that, and I'm not disputing the salary study itself, and maybe, I'm going to just say it out loud, maybe I don't understand clearly what we're talking about here. But we have a staff of two hundred people that would have, some of them have been employed here for thirty days, and some of them have been employed here for thirty years. And if you're talking about bringing everyone up to the midpoint, then are we going to hire everybody that we hire in the future at the midpoint? That doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm just saying, it doesn't make any sense to me, and maybe I don't understand how this works. But what I do understand, I think pretty clearly, is what the Sheriff's Department has done with the step plan. And it's my understanding that the way that works, and please correct me, something if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that the way that works is that you have steps that you go through over the life of your career that give you raises, basically. And that what the Sheriff's Department is doing is, and what it's helping them with, one thing in particular is that somebody, if they have a step plan over thirty years, and somebody comes in with ten years of experience, they can start them at the ten-year mark, correct? And so I did a little exercise on paper, so that, to help me figure out if I understood clearly how this works. And this step plan idea, to me, is the most fair way to everyone in the county to have in front of them something that aligns with the salary study. I'm sorry, I made exactly four copies, should have made copies for everybody, sorry. So the numbers in here are an example, obviously, but if we have, and the way I'm doing this is it's over a period of thirty years, until the midpoint in employment is fifteen years. So if you start out at twenty thousand, and in the salary study, the maximum is forty thousand, then, so the starting point is twenty thousand, the midpoint is thirty thousand, the end point is forty thousand, then it's based on the number of years that you've been employed, or the number of years of service, previous service that you had at a prior job that were in county's experience, right? So if we took the salary study that we did two years ago, and we put every employee based on their time and service somewhere on that scale, so let's just say that somebody in the accessory's office, that the starting salary is forty thousand, and the top is sixty thousand, you know, you would take their time and service and put them on that scale of years. Now, we're going to find some people who are below that, and some people that are above. And then we're going to find the people who have thirty years of time in the county, there's a handful of people in the county who are above twenty-five years of service that are still at the midpoint. So if, in my mind, is what we really want to do, and I'm, one of the things that I really want to talk about here, I want to talk about this in relation to taking care of our staff, I also want to talk about it in relation to some other things as well. We need to have a long-term plan about this kind of stuff. We can't, we can't just make these decisions without understanding what the long-term impact of them are. And I really think that the beginning of trying to do that was doing the salary and compensation plan that we approved two years ago. So if we took that plan, and we, if we adopted the idea of a step plan, and put people in that, and then adjusted salaries according to that salary plan, based on the time and service in their job, then that's what makes sense to me. Then, they would also be able to look forward to specific raises along that scale. And in the example that I created here, if the, if the step plan is every three years, then the scale is twenty-five hundred dollars per year, and this would depend on the salary compensation study for each position. So the numbers I'm using here are just an example. If you took the difference between the starting salary and the midpoint, and you divided that out over those three-year increments, then every three years, the person would get, or we could do it every year in third amounts. But, and then take that twenty-five hundred dollars, whatever that amount is, divide it by three for the three-year step, and have a third of it be for time and service, a third of it be for professional development, and a third of it being evaluations. Now, it requires a bigger plan than to just say we're going to follow this plan and take everybody to the midpoint. It requires some thought about how we're compensating people who should be above the midpoint, people who are below the midpoint, et cetera. I also want us to think very seriously about how we're going to provide professional development, et cetera, in the future. Now, the reason why I've, I've been thinking about this a lot, hopefully I have been thinking about it a lot wrongly, because I'm really going to be sad, but, you know, if we, the challenge that we have is that we have basically flat revenue. And if we spend three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars this year to raise everyone's salaries, then we have to have that in the budget every year going forward. Or we have to do one of two things. Lower the services that we're providing to the community, to our taxpayers, or lay people off. I would rather have a long-term plan on how we're going to manage this for the next, I don't know, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years, in a way that makes sense, that we can budget for, that we can know where the budget is in the future, and that all of our employees can know what to expect, instead of going through this every year and talking about, well, we may do this this year, or that next year, or whatever.
And I think the, the only, the biggest thing to be, was the scariest part, is our employees, county employees, is because every year you're depending, or so many of you are different employees, or anticipating a raise that we might not be able to get. Those are the dangerous things with the step plan, if we're going years of services. Now, we know that we just took the two hundred, I'm mistaken, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar hit with, with some of our taxes are from the mine. So do we give these employees false hope, or do we turn around and say, okay, for now this three hundred and fifteen is good enough to get whatever the study said, and get them to that point while we work out some other type of plan? Because the longer we take, you know, we're going to go into three years, four years of this money that was spent in this comprehensive plan that was done in the study. So to me, sometimes when we get into your step plan, it can be a little dangerous, because we may have a good year, and we go to the next step for some employees. The next year, it may not be go very well, and what happens to the other employees that don't get their piece? Or do we make sacrifices and get them a piece, and you're right. Some of those sacrifices could come up to losing jobs, and maybe even cutting some of our services, so we have to be real, my best mind, we have to be real careful how we do it, and what we do it. I, to me, I agree on percentage raises, because if we get them to the midpoint, we do what this compensation plan was supposed to do, then we can take a step back and look at, well, what can we do and continue to do?
Well, we could take the three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to do exactly what I'm talking about with it. And what we would do is level this, is put people in the appropriate places on the pay scale based on step plan. You know, your point about we may have a good year or a bad year is a very good one, and I think part of that plays into the fact that we have three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars this year, but if we don't have, if we take another hit on tilt, or another hit on copper production, then we may not be able to budget that three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars next year. And so it makes way more sense to me to have a long-term plan that we can actually build in goals around. Doing it this way, to me, is, it sets all of us up for failure, because we can't give our employees a set idea of where they stand. Now, granted, it may mean that at the, you know, in a really bad year, we'll have to say, we can't do raises this year, but at least it gives us a tool to budget towards, and we can say, you know, we have an obligation to, so one of the things that it does is it gives us an idea ahead of time of what our obligation is to our staff for that year. So if we can figure out mathematically, if we start this, we can figure out mathematically that we are obligated in fiscal year twenty twenty-two to provide a hundred thousand dollars in raises. And we could budget towards that.
Okay, I know that Professor Salas is also interested, but I now have three things. And the one that's most urgent is about your last observation. When we get to what I would call a steady state, because I'm a physicist by training, we won't see the kind of increased liability that you guys are talking about, where year to year you're going to have a liability for increase. Because when we're at a steady state, we will have as many people leaving as coming in new. And if the step plan is fully implemented, then the high-paid folks leaving are offset by the low-paid folks coming in, and unless you add a colon to the formula, you're not baking in an annual increase. Okay, so that's point one. Well, good, I'm glad that's fine. That means you shouldn't be afraid about the baked-in increase part, unless you add a colon, and year to year we can decide if we want a colon or not. Point two, two of us, I thought, a very good point you made, Mr. Chair, about the fairness of giving a raise to some people one year and the next year not being able to, that argues, in my mind, for an annual step rather than an every-three-year step. In that case, everybody moves up.
In that case, everybody moves up a year that we can move them up. And nobody moves up a year that we can't move them. So go with annual instead of every three years and we eliminate that. And my third point, which was, the first one that occurred to me chronologically, was that I need to apologize for confusing things. This is a case where, and human brains do this, I had this model in my mind of what the midpoint meant. And I've been through this and I've had it explained to me and apparently my brain didn't latch on far for me because I still thought midpoint was basically what you're talking about, that for every step that you've got laid out here, there's a midpoint. And I realize now, I've been corrected about this. That's not the case. And so I withdraw my idea that we should implement the plan by giving everybody to the midpoint. That was a faulty thought I had for a long time that I've got to get out of my head. I really like the idea of a step plan combined with the compensation plan to rationalize our staff salaries. So thank you all for your patience.
Well, I think, I just want to say really quick, the hard reason why I don't want us to decide today how we're going to spend the three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars because I'm not the only one with ideas about this. And I think it bears some discussion and planning so that we can actually go to our staff in the future and say, we have a plan and this is what it looks like. So thank you for that. Those two things make total sense. And in fact, in my drawing, an annual step would work.
And to me, my only thing is, we did a study, here we are two and a half years. I don't know what happened. I haven't seen anything happen with that study other than we spent sixty thousand dollars. So whatever we decide to do, we need to do it and we need to do it soon, whether it's, like you said, about the midpoint or if it's a step program. But something needs to be done for the county employees. You know, let's not take another two years and decide what was going on. We need to come up with a plan. Everybody has one. The project over here, the good ideas, my thing is, let's try to get it done as soon as we can. And that's how I feel, Mr. Solis.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I totally agree with the step plan. And getting it implemented quickly, you know, and as far as I, and a lot of industry, they tie it to current year evaluations. And if there's a step increase every year, or for whatever it be, when they hit that, they know that something's coming. Okay? And any indignity by our workers is, is, but we do nothing. Where they stay at the same point and we do nothing. But I think that it would really be great if there's a plan so that they know. So, hey, I'm going to strive to do good this year so I get a good eval, so that can add to my, to my possibility of my grades on the step plan, you know? And then we literally define what they're going to be doing for professional development and stuff. I think the discussion that we ought to have year to year is whether we're going to be able to afford a COLA. So this is a good year, what can we do this year? But we also, you know, need to think about the lean years and make it public what is the possibilities. So are we looking at, you know, reduction in services or reduction in salaries? Because that has happened. That happened in the education department, you know? When the budgets did not, just did not justify, or they could not support it, you know, teachers took cuts, you know? So now, as it's going forward, they're recouping. But we do need to have that discussion about, you know, what possibilities there are when that situation comes along.
So one thing I'd like to bring up is that I did a tiny bit of research on COLAs also in anticipation of this conversation. And there are some, a lot of different ways of thinking about COLAs. And so I would just like to ask that, so really what I envisioned when I was thinking about all this and putting all my thoughts together and everything, was giving the staff a six-month deadline to have a plan that we could approve on how we're going to spend this three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars to do a step plan and, you know, all this sort of stuff. And maybe at that time, what we could also do is discuss how we're going to do a COLA as well. I wouldn't be opposed to, if the cost of giving everyone a, so the cost sixty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars to give everybody a twenty-five cents an hour raise, is that per being period? Is that?
Per year.
Per year? Will cost us sixty-six thousand? So, so one thing that occurs to me is that maybe what we could do is give everybody a twenty-five cents an hour raise now and set a deadline on when we're going to immediately come back with the three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. Set a deadline as to when we're going to have the updated, because we are, we made a commitment to county staff to review and update the salary and compensation plan every two years. We're a little over that at this point, but we need to do that. And so reviewing and updating the salary and compensation plan, figuring out the step plan idea, and figuring out how we want to do COLA. But one of the things that has been a source of contention with people around COLA is that it does cause a situation in some cases where people who are doing similar jobs, salaries are just getting farther and farther apart because of step or percentage. And so I really, more than anything, what I want to do is compensate our employees fairly within the constraints of a flat revenue. And so I really, and have a long-term plan on how to do it. And so, and I just really want to encourage us to figure out a way to have a long-term plan and do something now. That's what comes to my mind.
She and Mr. Martin is being very consistent as far as supporting raises. Now, we have six months to come up with this plan, I don't know. But your idea as far as maybe doing something with, that comes out of the three-hundred-and-fifteen right now, I love that idea too. Could that hold?
Is that something that, I know the service department did that, and they did that in house. So is that something that we could task our own, you know, to do in-house and figure out a step plan? Because the way that you have it, and which is a very good thing about the time and service, the professional development, and then the evals, okay? Because do we have yearly evals right now for employees?
Not consistent, no.
So I think that's another piece of that, that there should be yearly evals.
And that's really what I would like to have at the end of this six-month, is an HR plan. And I think one of the things that I just want to say about that is that I think that what we're asking is a lot. In the future, I think we need to think about how much we're asking our one-person HR department to do in order to work on all of these things around, you know, evals and all that kind of stuff. But I really feel very strongly that we need to have a long-term plan on how we're going to take care of our employees and include all we said and talked about.
If we try to enter the evaluations, it's going to be basically pay for performance type plan.
I was going.
Go ahead, Mr. Solis.
Okay, I was just going to say, when we get to the point where we're discussing this, I just wanted to give you a heads up, I will oppose time salary to the performance evaluation. I think it's a recipe for more trouble than it wants. I believe strongly we should have annual performance evaluations. But I believe those should go in the question, to answer the question, should this employee be employed by us or not? Right? If they're unsatisfactory, they don't respond to professional improvement plans, then we need to let them go. But I do not like how supervisors, they can be abused when the performance evaluation ties directly to salary.
And I'm totally opposed to this kind of, that's where I was going to add. I mean, evaluations should be, you know, taking a look at the employees, you do what is required, you're learning what is required, what are we going to develop and what are we going to get up to the next step? You know, if we go on that pay for performance and, you know, whether it be HR, county manager somebody open up their door for some discussion and explaining and having those hard conversations why you can get that, there's a lot more than tiny evaluation on to that, but.
Totally opposed to that.
Which is a very good point.
But I think we have to have that.
Yes.
We have to have, not the discussion, well, the evaluation, but we have to have the evaluations. The other thing I feel really strongly about is we have to have professional development plans. Just, we have, this is, you know, to me, working for the county is one of the best jobs in the county. We pay one-hundred percent benefits. I don't think we pay, you know, super well, but we pay pretty well. And I want to take care of people and I think it should be a place that people aspire to work, not sign up knowing that it's the only person in town. Does that make sense?
Go ahead. I've got a question for Lynda or Charlene. We've had discussion about the fiscal impact of different percentage raises. I heard the chair indicate he favors percentage raises and I do as well. Do you have an estimate for what, say, a one percent raise would cost? And of course, that involves the benefits that go up as well.
It'd be a sixty-eight test for, right?
The sixty-eight unfortunately was twenty-five cents per hour, not three-two-five percent. Otherwise you'd be right.
I can remember, but we have five million four hundred and seventy-three thousand total salaries and benefits.
Five point four million?
The total salary and benefits according to that sheet that I'm giving you is five million four hundred and seventy-three thousand four forty-eight. So what one percent of that is? Five forty-seven?
I get fifty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty.
Which I had estimated in neighborhood of fifty-five thousand.
Beautiful, good estimate. So one percent is setting less than twenty-five cents an hour in total income.
Okay, so, so. One of the parts that, so I'm, blah, 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 blah.
Are you about to get into the question proportions versus absolute?
Probably.
Because.
Let me just ask the question, just to make sure that I'm not getting any thinking about it. So, so we have two things on the table. We have putting all county employees in an appropriate place on a step plan. And we have a conversation about whether we're going to give a proportional raise or an absolute raise now.
Or any raise.
Or any raise. And as I said earlier, one of the things that concerns me about percentage raises is that it takes people farther and farther apart.
In an absolute sense.
So help me understand here, does it, does it make sense to do a twenty-five seven-hour raise and a percentage later when everybody's actually in a line on here? Because then it makes more sense to me that people are getting farther apart when you actually have them on here in the right place. But my sense is that some people are farther apart not due to, due to sloppy hiring practices, I guess is what I must say.
Okay, well, so I'll give my pitch. I've got two pitches about proportion versus absolutes. And I guess, you know, I want to preface it by saying, it's just not that big a deal. I'd be happy either way, as long as it's a one-time thing. But, okay. Pitch number one is, you said people get farther and farther apart when you go by proportion, but that's not true unless your mindset is absolute, not proportional. They get farther and farther apart absolutely, but they stay exactly the same proportionality, which is the beauty of it. If you give absolute raises, twenty-five cents an hour, two dollars an hour, whatever it is, they get closer and closer together when your viewpoint is as mine is, proportional. And you end up having people with much higher skills, much higher education, more responsibility, not having the gap that rewards them for what they invested in their jobs that they should have. So that's why my brain thinks proportionally. The second reason my brain thinks proportionally is, if we're talking about one percent, we are basically talking about a quote, right? Cost of living has gone up more than one percent, in fact, over the last year. Cost of living doesn't occur in an absolute sense. It's a proportional thing, right? It goes up by two and a half percent or whatever the number is, based on the average person's basket of spending. If that happened in an absolute way, that all of a sudden it costs you a dollar more to live and it costs every other person a dollar more to live, then I would understand the rationale for giving an absolute raise. But that's not how inflation happens. So those are my two pitches.
All right.
When you look at, I mean, Town Silver City, they brought up their employees, but a lot of it was, and this is just an example, three percent raise per year, one point five in July, one point five in December, eventually that adds up and you continue to go on. That's why I like more of the percentage rate. To me, I mean, I like that idea. I think that idea would be great if we came up with, okay, a ten-year employee is going to get, for example, two dollars an hour, an eleven-year employee can get two, whatever, whatever it is. Once we're there, I think that would.
Actually, your explanation didn't just buy, I'm off, I'm off the, quite frankly.
My, one of the things that I would like to see, and this is where the twenty-five cents and everything coming out, you know, if we did something right now, and maybe it's a one-time deal till we got everything straightened out. So the twenty-five cents an hour would just be raising the bar by twenty-five cents for everybody. And then from there, we can definitely put out, this is exactly how things are going to work. And maybe we need to work on some kind of a formula or something that we use to figure out what a COLA would be. But then again, with the knowledge that a COLA is going to be whatever the budget can bear. So, but I definitely, I definitely agree. I'm even on board with the percentage, okay? Because it, you know, I can make arguments for both, and I think they're both good arguments. But I'm on board with a percentage. What I wanted to do in this meeting is have something definite. And we can do the twenty-five cents without dipping into the three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar reserve by doing a couple of things. Okay, so that when we need, so depending on what comes out of our step plan, you know, do we have that? So will we have to add to that or would we have a surplus? That's what we would have to figure out. But if we could leave that reserve alone right now and garner the, what is it, sixty-six thousand from other sources?
Excuse me, Mr. Solis, if the board decides to approve all the requests that the commissioners have as requested, we will only have forty-seven thousand dollars. So we would have to tap into the three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand or some other line items to be able to meet that sixty-six thousand.
Well, I, maybe this is the appropriate place to mention this. You know, I would rather, to our twenty-five thousand that we give the MNU for the Gulf Force into raises for our employees. I would rather dip in a little bit to our three-hundred-and-some-thousand emergency fund to provide something for the employees. Because going forward, then we can, we can really plan specifically for what we're going to need, just as Commissioner Brown says. Then we will know, we will know, and it will be more in line, it will be more towards the lower end than the upper, because there will be people, even, you know, people coming up. And then the employees will know because they probably will put it in their handbook, this is what our salary ranges are, these are how we're going to do it. And, you know, not tying it to evaluations, you know, because I've been on that end. Because evaluations can be very subjective, you know, and be a good thing. You know, but just knowing that there's going to be that raise there. So, you know, when it comes time, you know, I'm going to move that we don't participate with WNMU. And it's because as you've read recently, you know, I think they're pretty flush with cash right now. So do they absolutely need our 25,000 to survive? I don't think so. I think that our employees need it more than they do.
I wonder if it would make sense, so that we can do this issue by issue, to reach some conclusion. It would be a tentative conclusion about what we want to do with salaries. And then, and then let's go to the other points, because I'm not sure I can enter the discussion separately to the golf course.
Well, it'd be appropriate to make a motion right now as to what, you know, if I made a, just, we just go ahead and make the motion that we do a 25 cent an hour increase to our employees, and then we review our salary schedule to include a step plan and some kind of process for a COLA evaluation.
Mr. Soss, Mr. Chair, so just so I get it right, a 1% raise would be about $55,000 and the 25 cent would be 66,000, is that what?
Yes.
So it's just a matter of deciding, maybe 1%. 1% is pretty close to 25 cents.
It's pretty close, and both of those figures, I think, assume we're going to add something on. Like, we're talking about at most six months to adopt a step plan. That as long as the union goes along with it, we'd probably add to that amount, right, for the year.
Yes.
So I'm thinking of it as a sort of interim measure.
Yes, Mr. Chair, with, so I've been pretty quiet. I think, I guess, I'd like to hear with all the discussions taking place, what the county manager has to say, if anything. Or, and then have just a little bit further discussion. Do you have anything to say?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I would agree that taking care of the staff needs to be first and foremost on our list. You know, we started with nothing, we had no, no plan, no salary range. The start was implementing the compensation plan, now we think it would take several years to fully implement. You know, it's ultimately your decision how you choose to do this and we'll do our best to make sure your wishes come. But I would agree, we have to take care of our staff because without our staff.
The only thing I don't want with the step plan is I don't want to give our employees a false hope. I mean, if we're going to jump into a step plan, we need a plan, we need to look at it, and we know their revenues aren't always where we start, but the employees understand, because they do deserve something. And I'm with, with this, using the 25 cents right now and 66,138 for that. I just don't want to get us in too, somewhere where we can't continue. One of those comprehensive panels there for a reason, it didn't come too thorough for our employees. So I don't want to see that happen again. You know, if we say if we're going to do something, we need to do our darnedest. And hopefully other commissioners down the road also look at it that way and do their darnedest to do it.
So, did we ever give a COLA last year?
Give one and a half, right?
Yes, I'm done.
So I don't think we've done nothing since that study was done just this year. Um, Mr. Soss?
Well, and the other thing we did with the relationship to that study, because the COLA was independent of the study, we didn't make sure everybody was brought up at least to the minimum. So, you know, I, to me, that was the most important of the steps.
We did, we could have the money we had. Mr. Soss?
Yes, ma'am.
You have a motion on the floor that I would like to have a little bit more detail on too. But I don't remember what your motion is.
25 cents an hour.
Right.
My motion would be to, my motion would be to give a 25 cents an hour raise right now for hourly employees. And then from that point, we would enter into looking at a step plan for all employees and a process for COLA.
So, thank you for repeating that. And the things that I would think need to be added to that motion are the six-month deadline for the plan. And the plan includes evaluations, not evaluations tied to salary, but evaluations of plan for every employee to be evaluated every year and a professional development plan.
And totally agree that that should be part of our step plan.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, if I'm understanding correctly, 25 cents for all employees.
Hour, hourly employees?
No, I don't want to, at this point, include any supervisor personnel, our department heads, things of that nature, our elected officials, our top elected. If we need to look at that, I think we should look at that separately.
And Lynda, your estimate was based on hourly employees, correct?
It included everyone except, it included everyone except law enforcement, elected officials, and chief deputies. So it did include directors.
How do you measure, do you, okay, because they're paid on an hourly basis, that they can actually absorb 25 cents an hour, it can be calculated?
Yes, you can calculate the 25 cents an hour into that end.
But even that pool's not going to make much of a difference in the, in the bottom line of the money. And the reason I didn't include the sheriff's department is because they had already worked on a step plan.
Correct. So I would like to advocate for us taking that increase out of the $315,000 since what we set that aside for is increases for the year.
Wow, I don't think I'm right there.
Okay, so can somebody tell me the motion?
Let me repeat the motion. For 25 cents an hour?
Sheriff and Commissioners, there is a motion on the floor, we don't have a second yet, for the 25 cent raise for all hourly employees and step plan, process for the COLA, six-month deadline. Evaluation could be added on that and then the professional program.
The hour.
Some items in there are pretty vague. Would you object, Commissioner Evans, if we just stuck to the hourly for this motion and then you can make another motion? That specifies what you want with the plan? Please, thank you.
So can we amend the motion back to just the 25 cents?
I would like to just amend the motion, well, I think that would be.
I have a clarifying question then. So, Marissa said hourly employees, we're talking about department heads, who are we giving the raise to?
Sheriff, we should give to everyone, except elected officials. Law enforcement and chief deputies. And the chief deputies are appointed positions which are governed by a resolution that was adopted which is not to exceed 95% of the elected officials' salary.
I have two more appointed officials that is differentiated in the call plan. The other two appointed officials are myself and the executive secretary.
Although those are calculated. Into the 25 cents.
Only the 25 cents there, but not the other, right?
Correct, correct. Only to the 25 cents, they're calculated into the 25 cents, but not calculated into the 315, which is of the. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense. I'm guessing the motion should just say excluding elected officials, chief deputies and appointed, law enforcement and appointed positions, so that word clear.
Yes.
Because I don't know why there'd be some appointed and some not appointed included in there. Does that make sense that that's you more excluding?
That's very good work.
So there are four categories of people.
So should we try this one more time?
So, can you, can you read it back now?
So there's a motion on the floor for a 25 cent raise for everyone excluding elected officials, chief deputies, law enforcement, and appointed officials. So you have four categories.
I'm good. And we need a second, so off second, I guess. Any further discussion on this?
I guess I would like to know if the argument about proportion versus absolute made sense to folks and in the future, they'll be thinking more about proportions?
Well, that's what I was going to ask there, was the consensus of the commission to go with 1% or the 0.25?
My preference is still a percentage, but I also said that I didn't, it wasn't that important to me. So I would go with the consensus of the others.
So for right now, the motion was 25 cents, right? And then we did, did down the road.
What's your feeling about it?
Yeah, I guess it's not the end of the road either way. I mean, it's $5,000, I would tend to go with 1% from what the discussion I've listened to. Is there a reason? What's it?
Because I think that a quarter shows that we're working in good faith right now. We really want to do right by employees and the county, and this is, this is a one-shot deal. This is not anything that's going to be repetitive. We're going to do this right now as we can figure out going forward, you know, our step plan.
As far as the 0.25 versus the 1%?
Because it's equal to everybody. It's equal to everybody. The person making, you know, $15 an hour is going to get a bigger percentage than that person making $20 an hour. But moving forward, I can certainly understand Commissioner Brown's argument of proportion, because that person on the upper end has certainly strived to get there. So, you know, it should be a little bit more meaningful, so, and I'm okay with that.
I think this would be a start at some, for any other discussion?
There's still some considering going on, but I'm done.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm just trying to figure. So basically with the 0.25, your employees who make less are going to get more raised then?
To get more percentage rates.
More percentage rates, yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm ready. Any further discussion? Okay, do you see no further discussion, all those in favor? Ah, no, motion carries.
Do you want to propose another motion about future of the compensation form?
Yes. Is that appropriate?
Oh, that's a good question.
Yeah, well.
I don't know what to do. Because it is tied to the budget.
Perhaps we could express the role of the commission without any formal motion. I think you're hearing that the commission is interested in seeing the staff, you, produce a step plan.
Has copious notes.
Yeah. And that we would like to see that within six months at the very most.
Is that reasonable, Chair?
Am I forgetting, there is something about professional development as well?
Professional development, in balance, included in there. A comprehensive compensation plan based on steps, professional development and evaluation.
So I do, I would like for you to clarify the professional development plan. That obviously really needs to come from the respective elected official, department head. Does that consist of? Explain to me exactly how you want that tied into a step plan. Because I'm not, I mean, I see professional development, I see salary, and how are you tying? I just need you to clarify for me how you want me to tie professional development plan into a step plan.
Well, I think, I think the step plan, the professional development plan, and the evaluation plan are all pieces of a compensation plan.
Even if they're not specifically tied to salary?
Right.
It's almost like, it's not like all the compensation, that would be like a human resources plan.
Human resources plan. Human resources.
That means, that's, that's correct, thank you.
I said that earlier.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Um, you know, the other thing that I would like to be included in here, don't kick me out of the table here. Is a.
It's a reason, I can't get you.
Reason for that. Um, a recognition plan, some kind of basic recognition.
You also spoke about process for COLA.
Oh, process for COLA, thank you.
So I just wanted to back mine else, just to make sure that I understand, so that I understand your direction very clearly. This is what you want me to move forward with, and it's not going to change. So a step plan, based on what you've described, a process for COLA, an evaluation procedure, professional development plan, and a basic employee recognition program. So I have four tasks, five tasks.
Yes, so being that the commission is taking a vote, I don't mind those ideas being explored.
Thank you.
But before we proceed with anything, I'd like feedback on what's practical, what's not, why we can't do all four, why we shouldn't do all four and double down on it, or whatever. So I think we need a lot more discussion.
Absolutely, and that's why I asked a question at the beginning, if we were going to have this discussion before the $315,000 is spent, because I think this, this whole thing, I think, could easily require another special meeting just to discuss what, you know, how we're going to report.
No, we're doing two-a-month meetings, but it wouldn't be especially.
Well, a lot of time to think about, because I do agree with Mr. Billings. I think there's going to be a lot of different opinions about how we go forward and a lot of different ideas. I think it's, what I want is a plan that we all agree on that is a long-term thing, that our employees can count on.
There's been some good discussion here, and I would just like to follow up. There's, in my mind, there's not been enough from the professional we hired currently in county. I'd like to visit with her personally, as she's had some time to process this and think about it, and say, well, this is, you know, I can envision her if I'm in her office, this is why, I think this is good, this is why this is not.
We're relying on what we do.
I think the other part to this is, we have department heads for reasons, and I think their input should, should be, I really want, and not only department heads, elected officials, because they can, they're a pleasure. I think their input into this is just as important for this process. And I think if anyone, and not only is it in a bad way, I can't say this, but you know, somebody that's their supervisor, I think sees that employee more often and works with that employee more often than they understand more of a developmental plan or anything like that, or what they would like to see is part of it, so I'd like to see their input also.
And see, what I feel is going to be, the more subjective things, it's going to be harder to determine and put down in black and white, there's going to be a professional development. Because, you know, is that what's going to be wanted by the director, the employee, the county as a whole? But, so that, that's a good discussion there. And then the evaluation, I think it should be something standardized, you know, that, that, just as Chairman, I must say saying there that all, all department heads have that input so that one good solid, you know, document can be produced.
Well, clearly, it's going to be more expensive to do professional development for, you know, the finance director than it is for a laborer. But I think we need to figure out, you know, how can we, you know, if that laborer wants to advance in their job, then what would they do?
Well, because I see, like in the assessors' office, there's opportunities there to get education. So what are the opportunities going to be for the laborers, you know, for the mechanics, for the truck drivers? You know, what are we going to be doing for them? And in that, in that venue, you know, what do they want?
That's where the finance.
Yes, and that's looking at someone for a budget, and looking at it, I know some departments, and you're correct, if I'm wrong, I mean, I can see the road department had no training budget. IT had no training budget. There's departments that didn't have a training budget. There's departments that didn't have a treatment budget in there that, uh, you know, whether the, you know, train, whatever diversity, whatever training you've got, and other tools, I think those are the things you really need to pay attention to.
Absolutely.
How do you take that out of your personal?
It's also why I'm proposing.
There you go, that's what I said.
Forty thousand dollars. And it just said it's, you know, two hundred per employee if they not turn out that way. But, um, as an average.
What I like to do is, I mean, you tell me if, since we're discussing regarding this budget, do I go ahead and go through the commissioner's reports or the commissioner's request?
Um, before we do that, I've had a couple of questions on Linda's merit. Can you do, what's your opinion?
Yeah, I still have one. About the optional front door stuff.
So, um, Linda, will you please explain a little bit more about the sixty thousand dollars in IT for updated chart accounts?
Yes, um, currently, the chart of accounts that are in the in-code system don't coincide with what the local government division, um, they adopted these chart of accounts last year. So right now, as I work with the budget recorder reports or anything, I'm doing actually like three sets of workbooks. Um, one internally for myself, so I can separate, um, I have sub-funds within a fund or a sub-department within a fund, so I keep mine own separate to know what the cash balances are within, like, for example, GRASS, okay? Then I have the ones that are in here entirely which are combined together as one fund. And then there's the one that goes to the local government division, which is totally separate chart of accounts, don't even go with the final, that I have.
The account numbers that said are going.
Correct, so I just want them all to mash together so that it's very clear to everyone who looks at it that they have a clear picture of what's going on.
So I understand that part. Where is the sixty thousand dollars going? Is that going to Angela to fix it? Is it going to the local government division to fix it? Where is it going?
To Tyler Technologies. There are software, other ones that handle our software packages. So they will do an update to our system, and then we'll have to pay a maintenance fee on it. So it goes to Tyler Technologies.
Okay. Thank you. And the cash transfer of fifty-seven thousand dollars into the landfill fund, um, that is, um, the revenue, there's a projected revenue shortage, and you said that if the revenue isn't really short. Where is the revenue coming from on that landfill fund?
That comes from the landfill fees that are charged to all the residents that are outside of the municipality. And it's five dollars a month that they pay. And then the landfill turns around and charges the county for tipping fees, but we are not bringing enough revenue to cover that expense from the landfill. And in addition to that, we also use the environmental gross receipts tax also. So between the environmental gross receipts tax and the landfill fees that we are collecting, we're still going to be short about fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I just add one thing to that. I just want to raise your attention to that. I have started looking at that ordinance. That ordinance was written in nineteen ninety-eight and has not been changed since then. What I mean, there's a feature, and there's a lot of other things in there that we don't do. Um, so there is some assistance we could receive through the environment department. So we're looking at that. And, um, one of the main reasons for the shortfall is our tipping fees increased this year. Um, solid waste authority went through and out of that sort of plan and, um, took that. We did an analysis of all of their fees, so, um, those are going up so that they can cover their costs. And I think we need to do the same thing. We need to be able to generate enough revenue to, to cover our costs. So we'll be looking at that in the next two months.
And we finally add a note while you're looking at that. Uh, if you would examine again, or let us examine again, the question of whether that is a use fee or a tax, I would appreciate it. To me, it meets all the definitions of a tax, and yet it was decided in ninety-eight that it was a fee, and therefore that gross receipts tax should be collected on it. So every single time I pay it, I'm paying a tax, and then a tax on a tax. And, uh, we should not do that. It's, to me, clearly a tax. So just add that to the list of things to reconsider. Thank you.
And so when you say our tipping fees, do you mean the actual county's use of the landfill or county residents' use of the landfill?
It's county residents'. It's county residents' use of the, so we're responsible for different transfer stations throughout the county.
Right, so what's the, the stuff that they pick up and collect? They're charging a tipping.
You know, they're the one and the only.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Um, and then, uh, the other thing I wanted to know about was the cash transfer decrease of forty thousand dollars into the correction fund and into the road fund. So I just want to clarify what I think I know, just to make sure. So, um, so there are certain things, there are certain revenue sources that come into the general fund. And we use general fund, uh, money to make up shortfalls, like at the detention center or wherever else, whatever, if whatever revenue they have coming in doesn't cover their expenses, we use general fund dollars to cover that, right? Okay, thank you.
So I have one question to add to that. On the revenue side, the transfer in amount dropped from a hundred and forty-six thousand to a little less than twenty-six thousand. Can you explain that?
I guess, yes, um, Commissioner Brown, you're talking about the general fund, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, because that nine-five thousand dollars, those are all temporary. If you recall, like through, um, out of the year, we do temporary cash transfers.
Let me, let me, let everybody see what I'm talking about. Uh, if you have the hard copy of the President's Conference Report, uh, the first section is all revenue, right? It goes down to the second page, about the middle. And the very last line, which isn't really revenue, by the way, but for that fund, it's kind of revenue because money's coming into that fund from other funds. It's now says twenty-five six, and what it said in the prior version was a hundred and forty-six thousand. So that, that's the difference I'm asking about.
Oh, okay. Um, that hundred and forty-six thousand dollars would have been, like, like I said, it was like for temporary, um, cash transfers that we have done throughout the years. And so what I have to do is I've got to get that, but there's, I think there was, I have to look exactly which fund it was, but we had already done a transfer within this one year. So therefore, there was a reduction in it, and this can be only transfer that I'm showing there is the one for the, um, farming range. Um, what I did do was include that seventy-five thousand that we just did, um, for Guadalupe. I didn't include it into this twenty-five thousand six hundred, um, which I would do an adjustment for it, probably sometime in November or December, when the federal policy closes. And Guadalupe is a recent dollar reimbursement.
Okay, so there's some future revenue that's not accounted for here?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm ready to move on. Thank you.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, what I would add is for, as you were going forward with the commission's request, um, so that I can have clarification on that as to what the board wishes for me to do on these individual items. And also, if you could make a motion on, um, the twenty-five cent increase rate, sixty-six thousand dollars, if that's going to come out of the three hundred and fifteen thousand. If I understood that correctly, if you can make comment on that, along with these requests, so that I know what direction to take.
Okay, shall we start with that one, just because I think we're all thinking it already happened?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that the twenty-five cents per hour raise that was authorized earlier this meeting uh, come out of the three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar reserve for raises that the fiscal director has included in our budget.
Second. Two seconds, but two more seconds, second. Motion and discussion. No discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So now you want us to do each one of these commissioner's requests, correct?
We'll go back and if we want to do that one.
So actually, um, what I would like to do is, I'm going to withdraw my request for the professional development.
That's right, oh, yeah. You said, and you leave a comment on that.
Um, pending, um, the plan that the county manager and staff will come up with, um, I'm just going to withdraw that for now. That make sense?
Yeah, sure. Since mine's next on the list, I, and I'm not suggesting necessarily I'll vote on them one by one, but I just want to note that it looks like twenty-two thousand, but it's really only a twelve thousand dollar increase from what was proposed in the budget. Uh, because the city fair was already in there, and the boat mobile is already in there. So I just wanted to make it fair to the other libraries, and my concept of fair is reflected there. Eight thousand for Sucker City, four thousand for Hila, uh, based on my understanding of their size and needs and services to county residents.
Thanks for including the Hila library. We didn't, we have had requests for about two years from them. I think you had a request for four thousand in writing from the library.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a twenty-two thousand dollar budget adjustment for libraries.
The adjustment is only twelve thousand.
I mean, just excuse me, twelve thousand dollars, I have it right here, it's right there. Twelve thousand dollar adjustment.
Okay.
That's for the whole package of the commissioner's request?
No, it's just the library.
Okay.
So we have a motion for by Commissioner Brown? For by Commissioner Edwards? For the twelve thousand dollars for the, for the public library, where the second by Commissioner Billings? Any discussion? See no discussion, all of them favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, and then for me here, what, in that, you know, talking to a little bit with, with the county manager, thirty-five thousand dollars for the rooftop park, I threw that number because I wasn't too sure, but if you look in there on the veteran memorial wall, you're going to see tiles that have been broken out of rocks and damaged, and, uh, what, some of the discussion that was taking place is, is to redo that and talking to somebody or vendor to replace those tiles with something more and been talking about what was it, maybe marble or?
It was on granite face rather than replacing it with the tiles. The research office said he could create a type of monument to, to put in place of the tiles that couldn't be destroyed with the rocks that are being thrown into the tiles, shattering the tiles.
So shattering the tiles, so right in the tree there by the veteran memorial wall, I think we've come up with possibly would be no more than twenty-eight thousand, right? Somewhere in there.
So I would say that thirty would cover it.
Probably thirty would cover it so they can go in and look at it and, uh, get it back up to, to parky that it is a good time on Memorial Park, and we have that veteran's wall there, it doesn't look very good right now.
Are we sure that it's rocks that's damaging the tiles? And the reason I ask the question is because, um, if people are shooting at it, would that damage the granite?
I'm not an expert on granite. I don't know what bullet would hit to that, um, it's probably possible that it would, but.
Are we relatively certain? I mean, the picture I get is it's shot at, it's rip shay, and it caused all kinds of problems, and so maybe you wouldn't do that, but.
The way that it's located, and I'm.
We're, we're pretty certain it's rocks?
We believe that's the cause, yes, because it's.
It might be, there's kids, and it might not be you watch, but it's getting there with the, something like that.
But you're aware of size of rocks that tend to coincide with the amount of damage.
And with granite, you could just reface it, right? Listen, just something taken out of it.
Depends.
What's that?
It, it would depend on the size of what was taken out. If you hit it with a hammer and, you know, knocked off a chunk, you wouldn't be able to reface that. But you might be able to, you know, they do have a, a process where they can glue, you know, back on.
Put some of that big telecom stuff.
Exactly.
If it was vandalism that destroyed that, and probably was, when I was out there with a couple of veterans, our unqualified opinion was that it was more freezing ice in the rain. It did a lot of that damage, but it could have been that, it could have been a combination. We were out there on a cold winter day, and it seems to be like its spots were, just looked like freezing cold in the rain. So I think any, as long as we're out with the tile in the back, I'm really happy. I was in Horsberg on Saturday and drove by their memorial. Um, I don't have any to see that, but it's really permanent with bronze plaques and stuff. I'm sure that's very expensive, um, but something that probably lasts a long time. Granite a little too, obviously, and it's not, you know, hundreds of years potentially, it's not defaced.
Well, I would guess that if it had been four rocks, had them freezing and thawing, it would have exacerbated that.
Yeah, I might do that.
So my one question about this now would be, uh, in a fair way, you're not worried about it. We're not sort of prejudicing a contracting process by having already somebody in mind who's given us a price estimate.
No, sir, he was just trying to, um, to offer some potential solutions. He's aware of the problem and, um, threw that out there. He was in conversation with Mayor Bausch, and they talked about it, and he said, you could do this if you so choose, but no, we're not.
Okay, and part of that, you just, so, you know, that was part of the discussion I had with, was starting, what option do we have, what do we look at? And I think it was a lot of just questions that they were asking us to, what would be better?
I guess one last question would be, is it your opinion, and maybe this is Linda's question also, that this is appropriate as an operational expense rather than to come out of, uh, we're looking at some capital expenses for Batana Park for ADA? Does this make more sense to package with other capital expenses?
Um, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown, yes, it would be because of the cost that is going to be involved in the high.
And so I don't, I do, not my intention to stall things, just to have this in the appropriate place in our budget. So the manager is considering what to do with that.
And what's moving it from where it's now to somewhere else in the budget?
Well, it's nowhere, but, you know, it's, I think all of us, maybe I'm just projecting. I've been thinking all of these things are operational budget items.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And I'm wanting to clarify whether this one should be an operational budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure, um, we could put in an entirely separate fund, but you do have a capital line, I know, within your budget. We could, it could be that. Put one of those five zero two eight, page two.
All right, okay, I can see that. So that would go from twenty-two to roughly fifty-two, if we make it thirty thousand? I heard thirty in the back and forth between the chair and the manager.
I, I think that the thirty, would it, or do we stay with the thirty-five just in case? I mean, it can be transferred out of there, right? If it's less, so let's, let's go for the thirty-five just down some room, if that's okay.
Do you want to make that motion?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'd like to make a motion that we put thirty-five thousand dollars into the capital outlay in the commissioner's fund for two pledged full capital and veterans from Royal Water at Batana Park.
Second. Second by Commissioner Edwards, discussion?
Well, here's my piece. I hadn't put anything here, because my intention was to get, you know, into salaries and that. that was done. So is it possible for me to ask for something here? Because it's similar to what Chairman Ponce is asking.
Well, yes, we can go to you after we're...
Right.
We've done what we asked, we can, we'll, we'll, we'll visit with you after Commissioner Billings.
Okay, fine, well, I'm good.
Any further discussion? All of them favorite?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Commissioner Billings?
Um, well, something that's, um, always been a little bit dear to my heart is, uh, the DARE program and other general outreach programs from the Sheriff's Department and the police, uh, involving the youth of the community. Um, I know that, uh, my two younger children, uh, were on a first-name basis with police officers, city police officers and sheriff's deputies and I, um, got really good about them. I hope that, um, it helps, um, you realize that, uh, police are our friends, um, and, uh, they help us, uh, help protect us from bad guys. Um, and so, uh, I talked to Sheriff Billings, um, finally this morning and, uh, he said that, um, the outreach programs, including DARE, that the Sheriff's Department is involved in it, about 45,000 dollars annually. There is an anonymous, uh, donor, uh, here that joined in about 25,000 of that, so subtracting the difference, that leaves a 25,000 dollar difference. Uh, he expressed that it's, um, there's some difficulty waiting to December for that because they're, uh, ready to get, uh, kicked off right now. In fact, he's in the river, uh, today with a DARE training. Uh, I talked to, uh, Officer Molinato, is it Corporal, sorry?
Sorry?
Sorry, Molinato, he's, um, asked about, uh, DARE to the training. So I, I proposed this, um, nothing said, I was, um, I'd like to actually hear what the other commissioners feel about it.
Where is it currently?
They're, you know, they're doing the program.
It's in a separate fund, um, it's on page...
Also, is it, is it 75?
It's on page 75, it's not really, so, um, so the page is 75 of the one that's on the list. It's on the big entire fund, he's got a budget for all funds to get.
What's the number in there then?
Um, the number in there that they spent, um, last fiscal year total was 36,961 dollars and, um, they received a donation of, uh, 26,240 dollars.
And how much did you budget for this year?
I didn't budget anything because we haven't received any of the funds, um, so I didn't. I would, um, what I typically do is do a budget increase once we receive that, so I should have, I think it's a...
All right, I'm close because I'm on page 75, but it might be a little bit...
It's on 74, page 74, it's funds, it's on three.
There it is. All right, I wonder Commissioner Billings if you'd be willing to wait until...
Yeah.
We can ask the sheriff what the needs are and...
I think so. So if the sheriff has immediate needs, those are gonna be covered, right? Commissioner Will.
Mr. Um, Billings, uh, Commissioner Billings?
Yes.
Right now, um, whatever shortfall I have right now, and if there continue to progress coming out of the sheriff's, short, regular overtime. So, um, so let you know that we will be paying the overtime anyways, but it'll be coming out of his regular overtime.
Okay.
So it's a totally internal budget and so, um, we receive that, that usually comes in December, in the autumn, December, so...
Oh, you're saying it comes under that line on here?
Yes.
Right, right, right. But when we get the funding, then that line is restored. Got it?
Oh.
So we're not, not able to do the program because we're covering it. And so then in December, we could look at the shortfall and, um, that's correct?
It sounds like you've been doing that.
Yes, we've been doing this for many years now.
Okay. Yeah, I would, uh, that request, so, uh, we can hear from the sheriff more later if there's, uh, if there's, uh, any...
So we'll wait till, uh, until we see what, what, how it goes along, is that a, is going to work?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Soss?
Well, the, the one that I, I wanted to do was also at Batanatard, but it coincides with what we're already gonna do is the parking areas. So what I wanted to do was put in, uh, 15,000 to extend the parking areas to the edge of the building so that there would be more parking areas because I really foresee that, uh, we're gonna have to have an exit, you know, an entrance and an exit and the exit could be outside through those parking areas, which would involve in expense and since we're already gonna have somebody in there, you know, I think 15,000 would more than cover, uh, the extension of that parking area.
So my, what I'm trying to look at here is occasionally, you know, or should say, we, our county manager, by far, for the community development log line, correct? And with that, we're required for matching funds, correct? We have to match. How have we decided to do that match and would this help this match or would it? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, our match would be made with, um, our engineering and architectural fees. So you need to remember that in addition to being able to just construction, we have engineering and architectural fees. So that's what we're using as our cash match, so we would pay for that. Anything above that is considered leverage. It just, um, basically helps your application and shows that you spent more money, um, but we have to have our 10% match, um, but anything above that is considered leverage and, um, and it just shows that, you know, we're, we're putting more in than is required. That's just how they differentiate it. So you have cash plus, um, any leverage, right?
And what we applied for was in the amount of...
750,000.
Um, I'd like to ask a clarified question. So, um, the, the pot of money that we're discussing here in these different requests is the adjusted ending cash balance, correct? And so, um, uh, any, any changes to that dollar amount would come before us as a budget adjustment, correct? And, you know, we may not show it right now. No, no, I mean, if we don't pass anything, if there's money left in here, anything that would come out of that account in the future would be a, come to us as a budget adjustment, right?
That's right.
So I wonder if I might suggest that, um, that we, uh, table your request mentally. It's not, that money is not gonna go anywhere and see what the, because it's not gonna help the CDBG application now, correct? Because it's been submitted, so the leverage, we'll help that leverage, correct?
It won't help the leverage, but as we make our reports, we'll just show that we spent more, but it's not going to gain us any more points, um, on our application at this point because it's already been submitted. But we will be able to show that, but it's just a...
Sir, I'm wondering if maybe it would make sense to sort of mentally save that 15,000 dollars until the architectural and engineering is done and then we'll get what they've done and say, "Oh, we really want to spend this 15,000 dollars right here." Because maybe that market will be included in the architectural and engineering.
The, the only thing that I, I'm looking at is the, the CDBG grant is a wish. It's, it's not a, uh, for sure. You know, so I, I know that, that, I'm hoping, I'm really hoping that that, that comes to fruition, but it's, it's not, uh, something that, that is absolutely never gonna get.
So we will know by the end of August, is that right?
I'm wrong. I thought it was August 17th, it's September 17th when the council needs to award.
So we could leave this at this then if we don't get it too? Because maybe there's other things we, our priorities might change if we don't get it this fall.
Okay, no, no, you know, I, I would agree with that. We're, we're not looking at, at a big timeframe out there, you know, and if it becomes necessary, we can, we can do it. It's no problem.
And, and for no other reason than, I can't even, can't even picture what you're talking about. How a better idea for what you're talking about?
It's on the west side of the building.
Is that where the entrance door is? You know, we're proposing putting four parking spaces there.
Right.
But what I'm proposing is to continue the parking spaces all the way to the edge of the building because I can see in the future that if anything comes that we need a, uh, an exit point, it would be around to that side because the only other exit door we have is at the east end of the building.
You're talking about the building?
Yes. So it would just facilitate that, that happening. Plus, if you've never been to anywhere, even go, there are a lot of people now with handicap sickness.
So, um, that may also, so depending on exactly what you have in mind there, that might also be part of the discussion about whether it could be a driving part of the walking or not, too.
Yes, yes. All right, now we're inside, it's gonna be a driving turn now.
Pretty much.
I think that was our tentative decision.
Oh, yeah.
That was, that was your tentative decision, but you, um, we're gonna go before it actually you were successful with the grant, so then you can decide where you want concrete and if you wanna walk versus, um, you just, you have a lot of decisions to make about that in the future.
So you're gonna do that, just chief or we're headed with, with all this?
We're not...
Commissioner, it would be there too then?
Yeah, we're not talking about a, a long period of time there, so, you know, hopefully...
But what if the money disappears?
Well, hopefully that it'll be good news and, you know, become a viewpoint.
Mr. Chairman? I wonder if I could, uh, make a motion to approve resolution R. 1953, adopting, you know, fiscal year 2020, finding a budget as, I'm in, uh, here at this meeting.
Are we good or are we done discussing all of our main time budget?
That's what I'm wanting to find out.
I'll second that, so we can get to the present part.
Okay, so, um, motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Edwards, and discussion?
Well, here's the point where I say, uh, you know, we have 25,000 dollars that we're going to be, is proposed to be given to the university for, uh, economic development. I think it's, I think that's where it's put. So I'm proposing to take that out of there and if we are going to be doing some economic development, maybe to either put it into other areas or just to, uh, put that into our cash reserves so we figure out exactly what we want. Because there's two areas that, that, uh, I really wanna deal with, you know? I, I think that, that our IT department, you know, we have, I call it the Lone Ranger because we only have one person in there and I think that's, uh, might present some good problems if that person is unavailable. And I, I know for right now, you know, that person really does adjust their, their life to be able to comply with what's needed. So it's the IT department and then, uh, uh, I was thinking about, when I was thinking about the 25 cent raise, I was thinking that was part of the money that we could use for that. But I think there's other, if it's purely for economic development, I think there's other areas that we could probably spend it better and maybe that's on our, uh, our trails, uh, even supporting, uh, something local that's already happening that brings in a lot of, uh, uh, people to our district or maybe it could be for something new that could be, you know, uh, to bring in people, sporting events, uh, public events, you know, uh, stuff like that.
So let me ask you a question. If we improve the budget without money in there, it's not gonna be paid out for a while, right? So down the road, there could be an adjustment when it comes time to change it to another line item or just not pay it because I have a feeling that that's probably gonna work itself out eventually with certain things that are going on. I'm not too sure what they are, that's why I'm not speaking about them, but I think that's gonna work itself out eventually and it's gonna launch it back into the regular budget and I think we'll have that payment maybe here soon.
I would suggest that maybe you just leave it in the budget, um, and with very clear direction that we don't pay WNNU upon receipt of their invoice. You can leave it in there, just because it's in that line doesn't mean it would prevent you from moving it to another line or creating a new line in the future. Um, we could leave it in there, um, then...
I agree with you. I agree, um, yeah, if that's some point in time in the future, you can choose to give it to Billings and you could be this direction to, if that involves...
So, so if we go with the motion, so what I'm saying, we go with the motion, that's fine, it's not like the, the check's gonna be cut tomorrow, we still have time to see where this, this is gonna go and then to, uh, come back down the road again.
You can use it for, I mean, we're exploring, um, possible, um, planning grant monies for, um, uh, outdoor recreation, master plan, trails plan, um, it's obviously gonna come with some matching funds. I mean, you could use that for other things that you have talked about, just make it very clear that we are not going to paying WNNU anymore for support of the course, um, but you could leave the money in your budget. Or you could take it out and we could put it back in later for a specific purpose. It's, it's up to you, it's...
I, I just feel it'd be so much easier to take it out, put in our cash reserves and add it into where, where we need it at a later date.
I'm sorry.
Well, because the other place I was gonna propose it, even to the IT, is it maybe increase into the IT director and to her salary because I know for a fact that, that, that she, she schedules her, even her time off to be able to, to address problems here in the town.
The three things, if I made that term, I guess, going first with that question, I, I don't think we as a commission should be, uh, directing specific raises to specific people. I think that we have a manager to handle that and, uh, if the manager asks us for a budget increase for that purpose, then we can discuss it, but I feel, I feel uncomfortable singling somebody out and saying we're gonna increase the budget so that person can get a raise. Um, that just made me uncomfortable. Uh, item two is, uh, I like your idea that this could be economic development funding. Um, I'm more inclined to support, uh, eliminating this proposed purpose if we know we're gonna use it for economic development in some way. Uh, I'd rather do that than just have it go into the general cash reserve at the end, cash carryover at the end because it makes me feel that, okay, I've got everybody else's agreement that this is specifically for economic development. So that's on that one. And then, uh, I was interested to see you feel like maybe we can go along with this motion, uh, because previously you had basically swayed me, as far as this year is concerned, with the argument that we've made a commitment and I don't want the county to be the kind of body that backs out of commitments at the last minute. I have opposed this expenditure of funding for the past two years, but I have lost and, uh, so it's, I guess it's kinda strange that I'm suggesting that we not take it out, but I, I really don't want the county to be one that says, "We're gonna do something and then we change it at the last minute," even when I don't wanna do that thing that we said we're gonna do because, you know, our institutional reputation is important to me. So I'm reading into what you just told us, that you're not concerned anymore about breaking that commitment.
That's why I said it might work itself out.
And I heard that.
If you do get injured...
There's a lot of backstory here that I'm not aware of.
It might just, it, it just might, we might not have to fix that.
I, I agree with you. I don't think it's appropriate to, but I've also listened to, uh, the conversation that we don't wanna do this anymore. So that's not my decision to make, that's yours. Um, I'm just throwing the alternative so you can choose to leave it or not, that's your decision.
When's this payment, are we?
Maybe they don't send it at a specific time. There, there's no...
I know it's been within the last seven months because we voted on it and that's how we had this discussion of ours. It was, what, February March, somewhere in there? It was, what, in March somewhere in there? March, April?
I think we paid it in April.
I don't know why we would have voted on it. It was already on the budget.
We wasn't voting on it. It was in the $10.
Expenditure report.
Yeah, it was in the budget. So I want to say it was in the spring, but it usually doesn't, the invoice doesn't arrive at any specific time from what I can recall.
Well, I don't want to fight that commitment either, but if it's our intention going forward to not pay this, probably April, I don't know. He's telling me that's next March. Maybe we can, maybe there's some flexibility to tell him, okay, we're going to pay X amount. I don't know. To me, I mean, the motion that was made, I think we just let it go for now. When it comes up in the expenditure report, if things happen, it's itself out, we can discuss that. But, you know, and I understand what you're saying as far as, you know, and I have to respect the decision by the Commissioners and that were here before us. But, you know, I would like to see a lot of money go into other areas of economic development also, you know, like getting our trails or what we've been talking about, what we're trying to do with outdoor activities. So it's not, I'm trying to rename, I think, or say that the county doesn't keep their word. I think that that's $25,000 that can be used somewhere for the entire county to be able to take part in. That's the way I look at it. But I think, my opinion right now would be is go with the motion, we approve it. And when it hits us, if it has a wanted, so, out and we can discuss it at that point.
And the motion is to delete that from the budget?
I thought you made a motion to?
No, Commissioner Salas' motion is the one that we're discussing.
Commissioner Salas didn't make a motion.
Oh, yeah.
It's discussion. So we have a motion right now.
Oh, thank you.
Just yourself made a motion to go ahead and approve R-1953 as amended. And we have a second by Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I have some discussion on this item as well. And I think, you know, the last time we discussed this, we asked for some clarification about whether WNNU had to have this money in order to keep the golf course open. I don't have any idea what the backstory is that you're talking about, about it may work itself out or whatever, whatever. But I do think I would like to know if this money is required in order to keep the golf course open. We serve approximately 30,000 people in this community, of which, Charlene, do you remember how many people use the golf course a day? I was shocked at how many people. So I asked Charlene after the last time we talked about this, how many people use the golf course a day? And I was quite surprised at how high the number was. And I just want to remind us that, you know, we have different demographics in this community that want to have different kinds of recreation opportunities. We have people that want to use the fairgrounds. We have people that want to use the town park. You know, there's lots of different kinds of things that people want to do. And I think it is unwise of us to not invest in the golf course if not investing in the golf course would mean that WNNU was not able to keep it open. There is a demographic in this community that uses it, and it's part of the bigger package of amenities that we would consider as economic development in this community.
I agree with you. And it's not, to me, nobody's convinced me or told me that we've got this $25,000 that the golf course wants to stay away. I've got family galls, you know, my son galls a lot. I don't have a problem if it's $25,000 to keep it open because of the diverse sporting and people that use the golf course. People have different basketball, baseball, hockey. I don't have a problem if it's to keep it open. I will probably take a step back and reconsider. But I have not heard that that is the case with this $25,000.
I think that I made that very clear, that we don't actually know, and I'd like to know.
I can pose the question to Dr. Shepherd. But what you could do is you could, I mean, you have a motion, a second one before. You can leave it alone, whatever, if one shows up or depending on what Dr. Shepherd says, it won't be paid until it comes before you, and you can decide which one you.
So in order for me to do that, I would like to invite Dr. Shepherd to come talk to us about why that was.
Or his designated.
Or his designated, somebody, yeah.
I would totally support that on our membership. But I think we should probably just nip it there and see what happens down the road. It's easier to that.
Okay.
I can always, you know, bring that up again. But to continue with discussion, you know, when we're talking about budget, we got a wish list from all the departments. And they gave specific things that they wanted. Included in that wish list was some salary increases. So I thought it was within our purview to grant them. That's why they gave it to us, you know? So that's why I thought it was within our purview to give them. Now, I do have a problem with our IT department being one person. But the other thing is that I would like to, and I said it before, establish some kind of a position that deals with our economic development or parks and recreation or something. And this is probably the appropriate time to get that started. And that's where I meant, you know, $25,000 that we give to the university would be better served by maybe putting that onto a salary that we would give a person to develop something for the county as a whole.
So one of the things I think is really important to remember in this conversation about budgeting is that we have to have revenue in order to... So in my opinion, the budget is the most important thing that we do. Because there's nothing happens in this county without the budget. And one of the things that I think we really have to remember is that we have to find a balance between revenue and expenses. And when we talk about economic development, you know, we have very limited number of things that we can look at for revenue. Gross receipts, taxes, property assessment, PILT, copper production. Forget more.
I've already, fees?
Fees, that's all right. But the main things are... And so in terms of, when we think about economic development, I think we have to think very carefully about the kinds of amenities that we have in this community that people want home near for. And so I would just encourage us to think about the balance between those two things.
If I could put Commissioner Salas' mind a little bit at ease. I'm in discussions with Anna about what is the best way to move forward with her department. I had a conversation with her this morning. We're in regular discussions about what does she need and what do we need to make sure that the IT needs are covered. And as far as economic development, I just missed a meeting that I should have been at. But about, we're working on economic development from many different approaches. And they're looking at what type of organization this entire county and all the communities need. So all of those things are at the works. And whenever there is some sort of plan that's coming, a solid plan, it will come before you so you can make a decision whether you want to participate in it or not. But there are a lot of active discussions happening around that.
So my last point would be, it doesn't matter if we approve this right now. Whatever we approve, it can always be amended. You know, if I wanted to make some kind of amendment to anything, I could just put it on for one of our agendas, right?
As long as that expenditure hadn't already happened, it should have been, you know, been committed.
But I think the county manager is very clear what we want to do on this one, right?
You know, and I think too, I mean, not only is that, I think, yeah, I mean, like you said, Commissioner Edwards, this is probably one of our biggest responsibilities is the budget. So, you know, I think that, you know, during this timeframe from 2019 to 2020, we need to be continued, we need to have continued information on updates and budgets and where we're at. But yeah, this is, to say it's set in stone, it is, but it's not. If there could be an rest time, you can put it on certain things on the agenda that we can discuss. It is.
And maybe, maybe it's true to reference this, you know, to when we have our goals set in place and directions that we want to take, you know, to make sure that whatever we really want comes to fruition and nothing is just set aside just because we never addressed it. And so this is all part of that also.
And it's basically like we, you know, the money for the professional development, you know, for there. We're basically tableing someone after down the road so we can discuss it. We can discuss a lot of things down the road as far as that. Because I think that professional development is probably one of our biggest things also. Any other discussion? So we have a motion to approve, what do we have? Approve, disapprove Resolution, well, we have to approve Resolution R-1952. No, 53, I'm down here. Approve Resolution R-1953 fiscal year 2020 final budget. As amended.
Do we need to be clear about the amendments we made?
What amendments?
There was 12,000 additional for libraries. And there was 35,000 additional for town park tiles.
And also that the 25 cent raise will be taken out of the 350,000.
But that was already passed. That doesn't have to be part of this.
So those are amendments, correct?
Yeah, but you write that with a little bit of urgency.
Twenty-four minutes, we have a second, right? So any further discussion? All who are in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners, Commissioners, reporters, Commissioner Williams, do you have any report?
I have a question. There was on the regular meeting for next week, there were some items on the agenda. Now I can't pull that up. It's, are we going to talk about, are there any items on that agenda? I guess I could do with the manager.
You're talking about the regular meeting or the work session?
Either one. I can't pull either.
Yeah, they're not in, I know. But I was trying to figure out what you were, what you were remembering.
A few days ago, there were, there was stuff in there for the desk. Do you know, Ken?
There are some things in the process, Commissioner. I mean, nothing filed yet. Yeah, so we're still filed, and we have, we have no data yet. We're reaching through.
Okay, thanks.
And we decided to make this both on the eighth. Am I remembering that correctly?
Or are we doing, we're going to discuss that to do the work session with the regular meeting? Because we were looking for people who didn't get a chance.
I will be in press. Oh, she's not going?
My schedule tells that you would listen on.
Okay, that you are going to be on.
So.
Actually, I sort of stopped looking at it when Charlene said she wanted to.
I can't, no. I took it off my calendar and it's.
So then I will, so yes, I think we should have a combined meeting on the eighth, if that works for everybody.
By the way, I think today's the registration deadline, if I remember correctly.
So this is for the state of the country. So what we want to do is just go ahead and have the work session and the regular meeting on the eighth, correct? 9:00 AM.
If that's okay with us, that works great for you.
Oh, okay with you.
Would you mind if we took a look at the work session agenda first to make sure that we don't have any scheduled presentations for you on the work session?
Of course.
Or can we just notify you and make that decision? You can accept.
What's the side, right?
We have, there's, so maybe I'll have a report, Commissioner?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
And you have half an hour accordingly to this.
Commissioner Salas, what's your report?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Brown?
I have none.
Commissioner Edwards? And I have none, so we'll just wait for, before we move on. We'll just see what happens for the eighth, correct?
Yeah, we have, we have to see more than we can.
Just stay. I'm going to show the handout.
Where is it?
Charlie, you have the, you have the. We have told enough specifically what I was wanting to see going in the agenda. 48th of now, County.
We're just, we're just rolling in to tell you. If I don't get anything, then I hope.
Five minutes. All right. Take those water, we need to go.
Okay, yeah, no, he's, Richard on that one. Not me.
Okay, good. Sure.
You can go ahead and go ahead. The only person that was in, it was kind of testative, he worked on this, so, okay.
Okay. So then, who will be killing, I guess we'll have, on August 8th, we'll have the work session 9:00 AM. And then to follow would be the regular meeting, August 8th, correct?
I think that would be great.
Are you okay with it?
Actually, just combine it. We do everything at once. So I don't explain the agenda. We just go through it either by AM.
Right, I just wanted, you know, my work session coming before our regular meetings.
But I think her point is that in this case, it doesn't, we consider it a joint work and regular session.
So we both are in China.
By the way, people who want to know when to come for the regular meeting, they know 9 o'clock.
I get you. All right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to the mayor.
I'd like to second that. Any discussion? No discussion, no one in favor? Aye.